Today is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The time is seven twenty-six P. M. and I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Virtual Meeting. City Clerk, can I get a board?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
At this moment, I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? None, thank you. So go ahead, City Clerk, continue.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila here. And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here, thank you. And at this moment, I believe we have an invocation by Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Vamos leer en el libro, en la Biblia, en el libro de Salmos, capítulo ciento veinticuatro. Dice nuestro socorro está en el nombre de Jehová que hizo el cielo y la tierra. Great God, we come to you in prayer because you are a good God. We recognize our help comes from you, the maker of heaven and earth. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our city servants. We thank you for our elected officials. We pray for them, God, that your wisdom would fill their hearts and minds. We thank you for the people of Baldwin Park. We pray for healing, for salvation, for restoration, for prosperity. May decisions made today lead, Lord, to honoring you and serving your people of the city faithfully. In Jesus' wonderful name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you for that. And at this moment, I will ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you are able to do so. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the Republic. One nation, under God. Thank you. City Attorney, at this moment, I believe we have nothing to report out from closed session. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was muted, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. The City Council considered multiple items in closed session. There was no final action taken. Therefore, there's no reportable action, and that does conclude my report.
Great, thank you. And Council, an important announcement. Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority Meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority Meeting. At this moment, we will move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And I believe the first proclamation we have is in honor of City Clerk Week. And there is no, there's no other council member better to take this on than our Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor for me to present this proclamation to Ms. Marlene Garcia and Ms. Lulu Morales. So work that they do at the City Clerk's office is nowhere near an easy job to do, very complex, takes a lot of detail work. I was the former City Clerk for ten years. I didn't work in the City Clerk's office full-time. However, I understand all the work that they do and the responsibility that they have. So I want to thank them for the absolutely wonderful job they have been doing. They're amazing women that can hold their job and they do it. They handle the public in a very respectful manner. So thank you, Ms. Marlene, thank you, Ms. Lulu, for the work that you do. So the proclamation reads City Clerk's Week, May second through May eighth, two thousand twenty-one, where the Office of the City Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the City Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and the Office of the City Clerk provides professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of the government that at other levels. And City Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, which they are, and apparently rendering equal service to all. And I, I can see that they give equal service to every single person that they deal with. The City Clerk serves as the information center and functions of local government and community. City Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the City Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, country, and intervention, excuse me, and international professional organizations. And it is most appropriate that we recognize the compliments, the accomplishments of the Office of the City Clerk and especially recognize the work of our City Clerk, Marlene Garcia and Lulu Morales, Deputy City Clerk, to assist with duties of the day-to-day services provided to the Department of Residents and community members. Therefore, I, Emmanuel Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, I, Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila, Councilmembers Daniel Damian, Monica Garcia, Paul Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May second through the eighth, two thousand twenty-one, City Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to the City Clerk's Office for the vital work that they do and the services that they perform to the residents, community members, and surrounding cities of the organization. So thank you very much for all the work you do. And thank you for always being so kind to everybody and always having a smile. And no matter how many questions we may have for you or requests, you always do it again with a smile. And, and I really appreciate you. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Don't have it to show it to you, but you should be receiving it.
Right here. Thank you, thank you very much. Speaking for both Lulu and myself, it's been a very interesting journey with the pandemic. But Lulu has really carried the work forward. And you probably have noticed that we're up to date in our minutes. And every month, we want to make sure at every meeting, we have the previous minutes that are available. We are the gatekeepers of the history or the written history of the City of Baldwin Park. So this calling is absolutely vital to our, to our city. And as you saw, and we witnessed at the last special meeting we just had, we're going to go back and dig up some information on a specific topic. Again, why it's so important in this position to ensure that we have documents in place and that we have all of what you need in place to make your job easier so that you make great and wise decisions for the City of Baldwin Park and its residents. So we thank you for the proclamation. Lulu, I don't know if you want to say something too? Ms. Lulu?
Thank you, City Clerk, you covered it. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of you, the support that we receive from everyone. That's why it just makes it that much easier to do our job. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, City Clerk and Chief Deputy City Clerk. And at this point, we move on for a proclamation in honor of Public Works Week. And this one is presented to Public Works Director Sam Gutierrez. And then where is Sam? There he is.
Here, Mayor, I got, I got the proclamation. Thank you so much.
And I, I feel like, I feel like Public Works doesn't even deserve the week, not, not deserve, but they don't need the week. They get, they get, they get, what do you call it? They, they get compliments year-round, right? Everybody calls in and talk about Public Works and how they take care of the potholes. They've been taking care of the graffiti. They've been doing really good, even during, even during the pandemic. You know, our city, our city was staying nice and clean. And I know that when, whenever a resident calls in, I know Sam takes care of it. I know he calls him and then he's always, he's always on stop of that stuff. So very grateful for Public Works and everything they've done throughout the year and in the past. It's one of, one of the main, one of the main reasons our city looks as good as it does.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. I'm truly honored. I do want to, to thank all of our Public Works staff. John Boucher, our Engineering Manager. Anthony Vazquez, who's our new operation, Maintenance Operation Manager. Vicky Valverde, our Department Management Assistant. And we got Martha, so many good people and the rest of the staff. You know, this past year has been an extraordinary year, especially in terms of Public Works. And I'm really proud of the team. And I just want to let them know that I am proud of them and that they stepped up to the plate and continue to deliver projects and services for the community. So I'm very proud of that. So on behalf of all of us here in Public Work, I would like to thank the City Council for their vision and direction. I also want to thank Shannon and the E-Team for their support. And happy Public Works Week, everyone. Thank you.
And I just want to mention, every time I see a Public Works employee, they're always like, they're always in a good mood and they're enjoying what they're doing. And that's always a good sign. So very good, Sam.
Mayor, before you go forward, I have Veronica Lopez from Assemblywoman Rubio's office here to present to all the honorees as well. So if she can present to Public Works and City Clerk and then present after each one of them, please.
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Estrada and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me the time to also recognize your honorees this evening. So I have also certificates. And unfortunately, I apologize, I did not get them to you on time, but I will deliver them this week. So Public Works, on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio and the state, we and, and the residents of the Forty-Eighth Assembly District, we want to thank you and, and commend you for the work that you do. And not just, you know, for the city, but also to help protect our residents and provide a better quality of life for them as well. So thank you so much, Sam, and your staff. You obviously deserve kudos. I know the pandemic has brought a lot, a lot of, a lot of your assistance out there. So thank you so much. And to Marlene Garcia and Ms. Lulu Morales, I also, on behalf of the State of California and Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, want to commend you for your commitment to the residents of Baldwin Park by ensuring transparent processes with professionalism, integrity, and accountability. Congratulations to you both tonight on this recognition. And I think it's every day you need to be recognizing. We all thank you, the residents. As a former resident, myself of Baldwin Park, I thank you for all the work that you all do in the community. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And at this, at this moment, we have our third proclamation. That is in honor of Older Americans Month. And this is presented to Recreation and Community Services. And who is receiving this one? Is this you, Manny?
Mayor, we actually have a group at the Senior Center. And they are, and they are loud and, loud and proud. And I will turn it over to, back, back to you, Mayor. And we have Mark Anthony and several of the seniors and Irma Garcia. And you could take it from here, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And I believe I'll read this one out. So this is for Older Americans Month, Communities of Strength, May two thousand twenty-one. Whereas older Americans are among providing invaluable links to the past and wise counsel for the future. And the gift of longevity will ensure that today's and tomorrow's seniors will continue making significant contributions to our families by giving of themselves freely and by sharing their wisdom and experience. And it is important to acknowledge the contributions older individuals have made to our economic well-being in our communities and in the workplace. Decent leadership and mentoring, the seniors of tomorrow will be increasingly multicultural and multi-generational, more diverse socially, ethically, and economically than past generations. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila, Councilmembers Daniel Damian, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-one as Older Americans Month and urge all residents to participate in appropriate ceremonies honoring these men and women. And so is there any word from our, from our receivers?
Thank you.
Mark Javier, Irma, would, would you like to say a few words on behalf of the Senior Center?
Well, I want to say, thank you so very much. We totally appreciate it so much. It's a big honor and I just love them to death.
It's an honor to have them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Ms. Lopez.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. So yes, so tonight, on behalf, congratulations to the Recreation and Community Service Department on the City of Baldwin Park. So on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, I present a certificate recognizing you for your vital role that you play in keeping our older adults active and engaged in, in our community. And for your unwavering dedication during the pandemic and providing resources that they needed. Thank you so much, Irma and the team. You're very, very well deserved of this recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to see seniors at, at the Recreation Center. And at this moment, I will move to certificate in honor of two thousand twenty-one Senior of the Year. And that is presented to Mark Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. And then I believe here reads, "The City Council congratulates you for your commitment and your dedicated volunteer service to the citizens and community members of Baldwin Park. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to our city." And I think that, you know, those words couldn't be more true. I've, I've passed through there. I've gotten some tours of the Recreation Center with Manny. And, and I see, I believe we have some seniors that are volunteering with the food bank. And I know a lot of them are eager to be back. So I'm really excited to see all of you, at least virtually. We're almost there, almost at the end of the tunnel. The light is closer than we think it is. I'm excited to see you all there and, and engage with all of you. So thank you all for being a big part of our community. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez.
Good evening again. Congratulations, Mark Anthony, on being selected for Senior, two thousand twenty-one Senior of the Year. I must say that that is one of my most favorite events that I had attended in the past years, presenting certificates, having the breakfast, the brunch at the community center, acknowledging all the great contributions that our older Americans make for our community. Thank you so much to each and every one of you. But Mark Anthony, congratulations again on being selected as the Senior for two thousand twenty-one Baldwin Park. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And at this moment, we, we move on to two thousand twenty-one Arbor Day Sidewalk Chalk Art Contest Certificate of Recognition. And then I'm not sure, is there any students in our, in our meeting?
No students, Mayor. But we do have their artwork. And I believe Mark was going to show the artwork and you could read the certificate.
Great, okay. So Mark, are you ready? And that is, so I believe that is Erin, and that's Erin Cortez from Servis High School. And then we have Daniela, who is from Bersh Elementary. And I believe we have Ethan, and that is from Baldwin Park High School. We have Kimberly, and she is from Servis High School. We have Lucy, and she's from Santa Fe Elementary. We have Serenity Velazquez, who is from Margaret Keith Elementary. And we have Alaria Acevedo from Santa Fe Elementary. And their certificates read, "The City congratulates you for winning the sidewalk chalk art drawing contest that was selected in celebration of two thousand twenty-one Arbor Day. Thank you for your hard work and dedication and for the favorable recognition you bring to your school and our community." So excited for that and congratulations to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. I unfortunately did not have individual names, but also if they're listening on YouTube or someone, just congratulations to each and every one of you. And I am in contact with Lulu, City Clerk, to provide me with those names. And I will make sure that we provide certificates for each and every one of you. Thank you for your commitment to our environment. And that's very important because it is your future, your future students. So thank you again. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you to all of them. And thank you to Veronica Lopez for coming onto our virtual meeting and representing our Assemblywoman.
Thank you for having me.
And please thank the Assemblywoman for us. And hopefully we can see her sometime soon.
Oh, definitely.
Very busy schedule, but thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Great. And so, City Clerk, at this moment, we move on to public communications. Is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have five speakers, and they are John Rios, Greg Tuttle, Javier Navarro, Justo Vicente, and Catherine Lozier. I'm going to defer to the Deputy City Clerk.
Here, let me go ahead and make that call. This is Mr. John Rios.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Rios. This is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the City Council Meeting. I believe that you wanted to make a comment. Is that correct?
Sure do, young man.
Great. And so let me interrupt you real quick before you start. Don't worry, your three minutes haven't started. I just want to remind everybody that if you'd like to hear Mr. Rios' comments and the rest of the City Council Meeting in Spanish, you are certainly welcome to do so on our Alternative's YouTube channel. Mr. Rios, go ahead.
Okay, let's start with a BP proud deal that's going on right now. You know? I know that you weren't involved or Danny wasn't involved. But the other three people, they are there, they were involved. You know, it's, you guys are doing the worst thing you can do to the citizens of Baldwin Park. You, the three of you were in that meeting that Southern California came over, talked to us and told us that it wasn't a good idea. But you guys still went ahead and voted in. We're losing money. I'm not because I have up out. You know, but the other citizens that I talked to, they're a little upset about it. But enough on that, you know, the three amigos, you know, they need to understand the citizens are not happy with this. And they're going to get worse after we send out those flyers. Another thing is, I heard that they want to open for the outside vendors to stop by and do whatever they want and don't have no licenses, no Health Department cards or anything. Do you want to be as bad as a morning? City of Industry, La Puente, Basset? They have street vendors all over the place. You know, we need to protect our old small businesses that we have right here. You guys have to start making good decisions or you guys are going to be out. Like I told you since the beginning, Mayor, you need to get rid of that cancer that you have inside house. You need to get rid of, I told Ben to send outside flyers for the citizens on Spanish and Thai. He never did. They only sent out the flyers in English. So we need to, you need to start kicking some butt, to tell you the truth. Okay? So have a good evening and think about it. You know, I did send you those pictures. I don't know if you had a chance to see them. But that's another problem, you know, that we can talk, you know, in a later date, okay? But thank you for calling up and you have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rios.
Okay.
City Clerk, who is next?
The next caller is Mr. Greg Tuttle.
Hello?
Mr. Tuttle, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you regarding your public communications. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the people listening now that didn't hear in the special meeting, I talked at the special meeting and I wanted to make it crystal clear that my comments on the council people are for Garcia, Hernandez, and Avila. It has nothing to do with the Mayor Estrada and Danny Damian because they weren't involved in this electrical scam. And like Mr. Rios said, we were at this meeting, the council meeting, and I can't give you an exact month, but oh seventeen, oh eighteen, Southern California Edison representative came and explained this was not a good idea for the city to do and would cost the city more money and not to do it. But they all thumbed their nose at this, especially Monica and the mayor. This electrical bill that you're getting from Baldwin Park Proud is going to cost you more money. The council wants to raise it only because they screwed up. The three amigos did because they didn't read the fine print. It's going to cause, the city's going to be about four point two million in the hole. This was just discussed at the special meeting. The people need to understand it's never going to make a profit. It's never going to get anywhere. And you have a city manager laughing his ass off because he's retiring next month and he's walking away with a big paycheck. And he's the one that helped originate this thing. And he's saying, oh, Southern California Edison rates are fluctuating all the time. Well, why is it I have two meters at my shop? And the only reason they fluctuate is because of the power that I use. It has nothing to do with the rate. And then the lady that's representing the scam company goes, well, we had problems in Texas with the power outage and all that stuff. So that affected California rates. That is all BS. These people are confessed liars. And Shannon's lying to everybody with this Southern California Edison deal. And he, he got this thing in, in, and it's costing, and he's going to be gone, taking his retirement check, and we're going to be paying this bill forever. We need to get out of it at whatever cost it costs. And then the other thing with this police cameras, these police cameras are setting over in the yard. Ask the city yard where the police cameras are. We already had city, we already had police cameras in the cars. They took them out because nobody had the time to look at the tapes. Nobody had the resources. Nobody has the personnel staff. Hire more cops. Don't put these cameras in the cars and they're wasted money. They turn them off when they don't want them to be used. This is not a good ideal and it's a waste of five hundred thousand dollars and it's going to cost us more money because the cops are going to have to say, we need more staff to look at these tapes. So we need to stop this now. And we need to move forward with getting rid of this BP proud. And it's costing us thousands of dollars and millions.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Your time is up.
Sorry.
No worries. City Clerk, who is next?
The next caller is Javier Navarro.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Navarro. This is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you regarding your public communication request. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just want to give a big, big shout out to Irma Garcia and her staff here at the Senior Center on the outstanding job that they have been doing and the, and the hard work they've been doing on the home delivery food program for the seniors. I mean, they've been doing it for over a year now, on Wednesday for the YWCA and on Thursdays for the CDVG Care Act. I mean, I know firsthand how hard they work. I see them working every Wednesday and every Thursday. So I just want to give them a, a thank you. And that's it for me. Good night.
Have a good night, Mr. Navarro. Thank you for calling in.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for having me. Bye.
City Clerk, is there anybody else looking to call?
The next caller is Justo Vicente.
Good evening, this is your interpreter. Can I have Mark or David connect with me via chat, please?
Please leave your message for six.
Did you want to try one more time, City Clerk?
Sure, yes.
Please leave your.
Okay. You can move on to the next caller, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The next caller is Catherine Lozier.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Catherine Lozier, this is Mayor Estrada from the city of Baldwin Park. I'm calling you regarding your request for public communication.
Thank you so much. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, community partners and fellow community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I wanted to take a quick moment to say that on Tuesday, May eleventh, we reopened for in-person service. And it has been an absolute pleasure to serve the community in person again. For those who may have missed my speaking on last week or last council session, we are open Tuesdays for in-person service from one to eight and then Wednesday through Saturday, eleven to six. And we have sidewalk service an hour before that and then by request throughout the week. So it's a treat to see people again in person. And then in May, we have a couple of, of special celebrations. One is for the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. We have book lists and virtual programming to celebrate that Heritage Month. Um, and a couple of upcoming programs include Thursday, May twentieth, we have Dancing Storytellers. It will be an Indian Mythology and Me, a music center special event for children. On Tuesday, May twenty fifth, we have Melody of China, again, a music special center event for all ages. And Saturday, uh, May twenty ninth, we have San Francisco Chinatown, a Minecraft tour that's both youth-created and youth-led for ages thirteen and up. Those events can all be found on our webpage, or excuse me, our website at lacountylibrary.org. And then we also have a special library card in honor of Foster Care Awareness Month. Not only do we normally have the, the, the special card for foster youth seventeen and under, but in May, we're also giving away a free book for anybody who signs up for a foster youth card. And more information on that and any of the library's programs and services, again, you could visit lacountylibrary.org or give us a call at the Baldwin Park Library at six two six nine six two six nine four seven, or better yet, stop in in person and see us. Thank you all so much and have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you for calling in, Ms. Lozier.
Thank you, sir.
City clerk, is there anybody else looking to speak?
That concludes our comments here.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, I will close public communication. And we can move on to a consent calendar. Is there any items council is looking, wishing to pull?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to pull item seven, eight and nine, please.
Seven. Nine. Okay, uh, is there any other items council is looking to pull? No, if not, I would like to pull item number four. And so I believe at this moment, I will make a motion to pass consent calendar items one, two, three, five, six. And that's, that's about it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objection? Thank you. So at this moment, we move on to um item number four. We'll just go down numerical order. And so Manny, if you kind of want to explain what item number four is and what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity to uh expand a little bit on the staff report. The staff report pertains to authorization to appropriate funding for a summer childcare program. And we'll be offering this program at the community center. The, the purpose of the report is, I mentioned that the appropriate funding for childcare and fiscal impact. The fiscal impact is going to be sixty one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. That is what we anticipate generating in terms of income that we will offset with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So essentially, we will be providing free childcare for eighty-four participants for a nine-week period at the community center. And the allocation we are requesting is sixty one thousand seven hundred and forty. There are, there are some requirements, proof of Baldwin Park residency. Proof in terms of the child belongs to the household as well as proof of income. So this is a request that the mayor put forth at the last council meeting with council consensus. And I think this concludes uh my staff summary. Any questions? Be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. So I don't know if any council members have any questions or concerns?
I, I just have a comment. Uh, I mixed, um, Mayor, Mayor, excuse me, this was an excellent idea. I'm very excited about this because as you know, I work for the school district and a lot of parents are always looking to, where am I taking my child in the summer? And there's fees and I can't afford the fees. So this gives them a great opportunity. I mean, I had small children at one point and luckily I never had to go through that, but I, I understand what they go through because I dealt with them so many years. And I'm really excited that this program is, has been open for them and they have more options. So that they don't have to worry, especially now that they're going back to work and in person. So great idea. Thank you for that. Thank you, Manny, for making it happen as well. I'm really excited and I know the parents. So now we have to advertise it, send it to the school district to make sure that all the parents are aware. So and you're gonna have a very successful program, I'm sure. Thank you.
Absolutely, very much. And I also like to elaborate one more time where we have enough room for one week for eighty-four kids. So depending on how many times the children participate, uh, will determine how many weeks there are in the program. So one week, eighty-four children will be in the program and we will be following all the COVID nineteen health guidelines and all the best practices. Uh, as soon as we found out about this about a week or two weeks ago, we have already ordered all of the equipment required to have a safe environment indoors. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
And, and of course, I want to thank Manny because, you know, they jumped on this and they got it done. You know, we, we asked, we talked about this the last meeting and in two weeks, it's all set up and ready to go. And, and I think it's important. It's an important conversation to have in a community like ours. Where, you know, Mayor Potem is right. Childcare is, is inaccessible to many, many families in our community and, you know, it I, I know that eighty-four positions isn't going to solve that, but it's, it's the start to one of the most important conversations that we can have. And, and I'm, I am excited about it. I'm thrilled. I've been looking forward to this moment. You know, it's very important that we, that we help out our community, that we look at the demographics, that we help our, our children develop and, and have a safe place to grow. So there's, there's no more questions or concerns. I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion and that motion is a motion to pass item number four and direct staff to explore and report on fully subsidized parks and recreation services for Baldwin Park residents. Meaning that, thank you. No worries, Mayor Potem, but I just wanted to elaborate on that. And that means that we are passing this, this program. Moving it forward and we are also continuing the exploration to expand and, and be able to offer children of all ages and, and our community about any Baldwin Park resident services and eliminate that barrier to access. So thank you. I believe I have a second. Is there any objections? No, so at this moment, item passes four to zero. And I believe, Mayor Potem, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, so I pulled item number seven. A little background on that, we are looking to approve Enrique Saldivar as our next chief executive officer here in the city of Baldwin Park. As you all know, or may not be aware, maybe, that we had a, a lengthy process to, to hire our new chief executive officer. So we had a long list of applicants that we had to go through. We did the, the paper screening and then after we did that, the council interviewed the top candidates. After we interviewed the top candidates, we sent them off to a group of city managers that interviewed them as well. From there, uh, we, we picked the top candidates, again, the top three, and we interviewed them one more time. So it was a lengthy process and I'm very excited to share that, that the, all of us agreed on the same person. We were all on the same page. We, we seem to all have caught the same feeling about this person, his experience. Very well-rounded executive that I think he will bring a lot to our, to the city of Baldwin Park. So I'm very excited about approving Mr. Enrique Saldivar's contract. So I just wanted to share the process we went through and mostly that as a council, as a whole, we all agreed on Mr. Saldivar. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve item number seven to ratify and adopt a resolution to update the city of Baldwin Park comprehensive pay schedule in accordance with CalPERS established guidelines and approve the employment agreement with Enrique Saldivar for the position of CEO for the city of Baldwin Park. And that is my motion.
Second. Any objections?
Thank you.
Mayor Potem's motion passes and I believe we move on to item number eight and Mayor Potem, you have the floor again.
Okay, so item number eight, uh, this is with our police department. And I just wanted Chief to elaborate more on this item so we can better understand or the public can better understand exactly what this item is about. If you, please, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for allowing me to explain a little bit more about this staff report. Primarily, it, uh, two things, it, it, the state, state and federal laws that have been recently passed have added some additional language to, to the the, the specific class specification for police officers. And it, and it includes, you know, law enforcement accountability and encourages us a stronger uh relationship with the community, not, not only community, but also business community and also drives to, to the fact that they, they should be aware of this specification and what the requirements are to be a police officer in any law enforcement agency. But primarily here for Baldwin Park, I'm really looking hard at this to make sure that our, our applicants are more, more community-minded. And so they, that we are in collaboration with the community to reduce crime and make it, make a, make the community a safer place to live, work and visit. And I might, excuse me, ma'am, I might add that this was actually a part of, that uh HR Laura Thomas put together the, the, the staff report, you know, in collaboration with the, the police department and putting together the, the required information in the specs that allow us to be compliant with state and federal guidelines.
No, you are on mute, Mayor Potem.
Thank you for that explanation, Chief Lopez. I think it's important that, that everybody knows that we are staying in compliance with state and federal guidelines. And it's important that, that everybody knows that we want our law enforcement to have more accountability and, and be very community-oriented. So passing this item is very important and the explanation was very important. That's why I had to pull this item. So thank you, Chief Lopez. And with that, I would like to uh move to approve item number eight to ratify and adopt resolution to update the city of Baldwin Park Job Classification Plan and approve revisions to the police officer class specifications. Do I have a second?
Second. Any objections? Nope. So item number eight passes. Mayor Potem, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so item number nine, request uh to authorize to purchase body worn cameras in car videos. So I know we have had in the past uh cameras and I don't know why they were removed, but I know it has been proven that, that they're very effective. So I would like Chief Lopez to, to share how it was that you decided on this particular camera. I know there was a various companies that offer the same service. So as a police department, how did you decide that this is the best camera for Baldwin Park?
Yes, sir. Thank you again for allowing me to speak on this. The process was not an easy process. Of course, we had the, the officers participate in testing each one of the cameras that were, from the three vendors that we looked at. And, you know, a lot of it has to do with the, you know, the, the, the ease of and use of the camera. Plus also the other part that I, I look at as for the audit capabilities and the, and the review for us as managers to look and make sure that our officers are in compliance with the, with the mandates of, of the policy that we're, we're working on in, in producing. You know, I, I don't really know much about the, the prior cameras that were used in the, in the past. However, the technology from then to now is, is, is incredible. So we, we also look at the, you know, the, the capabilities of the redaction, the storage and all the things that were offered as, from the three companies. And Axon, uh, it proved to be the, 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 the most fiscally responsible for the, for the city. As well as, if you take a look at both LAPD and the Sheriff's Department and there's several, several large agencies who also use Axon because of the, the capabilities that I, the cameras from Axon provide for the, for the department. So that's the reason that we looked, we looked at Axon and, and we suggested that Axon be the, the vendor for, for our use for cameras and, and digital in car video as well.
And the use of the cameras. So every single one of our police officers will be wearing this camera and they must have it on at, at all times? Or how does that work, Chief?
We're establishing a policy that, that identifies when and when and at what time that they're required to turn it on. You know, again, it's, it's, uh, there'll be a, a grace period for officer to learn the period of time when they're required to turn it on. And also it's a, it's a muscle memory process as you're getting out of the car or doing those kind of things. There's a lot of things you have to be cognizant of. You know, when you're talking about officer safety and getting out of the car, taking off your seatbelt and looking at paying attention to the things that you need to pay attention to and then also remembering to activate the camera. So we're looking at that as a, as a, as a grace period of time to allow the officers to get accustomed to the process. And, but everybody will have the camera, including supervisors and lieutenants, I believe is we recovered enough to get up to the lieutenant rank. So everyone will have your camera and there will be a policy that we're working on that establishes the protocols for when, when they can use that and what settings they can use it on during.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that information. Uh, with that, I'd like to uh move to pass item number nine, requests for authorization to purchase body worn cameras and in car videos. That is my motion.
Second. And Mayor Potem, before you continue, maybe we could just kind of touch on how these cameras are being funded?
Yes, Chief.
Yes, you know, we, we, the funding is coming from the law enforcement development impact account and also for the American Rescue Plan Act. The remainder of the balance of quarter fifty-three thousand is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, is there a way to find out if a police officer purposely turned off the camera for a certain purpose? Uh, in case of an incident, uh, that's, I know that that's a concern of many residents is obviously right, you know. I think it works both ways. It protects the residents to make sure that they're not being, you know, there's no police brutality there and vice versa. But we also have to be mindful of some police officers that may purposely turn their cameras off because they don't want certain things to be seen. Is there a way to monitor that? Is there a way to see that if, that they purposely turn that off?
Absolutely. And that's why I, I like the Axon product because it's audit capabilities for, for supervisors to monitor that. And additionally, uh, other cameras that are within the vicinity of the camera that's been activated, those cameras will also be activated as well. So there's a lot of safeguards in the, in the, in the use of the camera. Plus the, the, the audit capabilities of being able to look at and review body worn video as it's, you know, by supervisors, which will help us make sure that the officers are uh turning it on at appropriate times and at the conclusion of an incident, that's when they're authorized to, to turn it off.
Got it. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Then, uh, I believe, Shannon, I believe you had a comment?
Um, yes, Mayor, and I know the chief wasn't here and maybe he doesn't know the history on the old cameras. Um, the old cameras that we had are easily ten to fifteen years old. They were already in pretty worn shape when I arrived with the city. They were only uh vehicle-mounted up by the mirror. So they were not body worn, so they wouldn't record anything if an officer had to go on a chase or go to someone's front door. And then on top of that, the technology at this point, actually a few years ago, the top technology became old and outdated and they're no longer serviceable. And as you know, with these type of technologies, you know, ten or fifteen years is, is a lifetime. So this is a brand-new system. It's fully supported with software. Um, and as I mentioned, it covers both the vehicles and the body. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. So I believe at this point we were at a second. So was there any objections? No? So. No. So Mayor Proton, your motion passes. And I believe that was it for your items, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So at this, at this point, we move to City Council acting as successor agency of dissolved Community Development Commission. And there's a consent calendar, and I will make a motion to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any objections? No, so consent calendar passes. And I believe at this moment, moment, we have a public hearing on item number 10, and that is adoption of resolution number 2021. Adjusting rates for Baldwin Park resident owned utility district. So at this moment, I will officially open and ask for comments in favor and comments in opposition. So City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak in favor?
No, Mayor, no speakers.
Okay, and is there anybody looking to speak in opposition?
No, no speakers.
Great. So at this moment, I will officially move to close public, uh, public hearing and then take item for consideration. Uh, is there any comments from City Council?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I, I just want to say that based on the, on the conversations we had earlier at closed sessions, I am not ready to make a decision on this until I have all the information that both Councilwoman Garcia requested and myself.
Yeah, Mayor, I was gonna, I was gonna actually suggest to maybe bring this back or table it for now until we can gather all the minutes and all the initial presentations that were given to the council at whatever time it was that they brought this program forward to us to make sure that the information that we have now matches to the information that was initially provided by the CCA. And based on that, then I think that we can go back into discussion and figure out if it's something that we want to do. But for me, I, I won't increase the rates at this time. I, I would rather, you know, table it and bring it back.
Okay, yeah, and, and I believe that we do have to do some further studying into the topic and issue. And not only that, but I don't believe that now is the time to raise utility costs on our residents. I know that we're having another public hearing for another potential discussion regarding raising utilities. Coming out of COVID, our, our community is, is struggling. They're still barely getting back on track financially. And I think that this is in need of a, a more broad discussion regarding how we can potentially mitigate the outcome of this. So at this moment, I will make a motion to hold, what would be the correct motion, Shannon?
Yes, Mayor, we would ask that you close the public hearing, and then you could entertain a motion to hold the item over till the next or future meeting.
Okay, I thought I closed the public hearing, but okay, so.
You did.
Yeah.
Right, perfect.
Okay, so at this moment, what, how, what was it, Shannon? We're holding this off. We're gonna, so we want some time to kind of look at all the factors, how we can make them, or what the risks are, and have a full-on discussion, so.
So because it's a public hearing, it's best to carry it over to a specific date. So if you want to carry it over to the next meeting, or you could carry it over to meetings.
Yes, you are, you are required, Mr. Mayor, to hold it over to a specific date, as Shannon mentioned.
And we should, staff should be able to get you the information that was requested before the next meeting. If there's still questions at that point, it could be held over again.
So I would, I would make the motion to hold it off until June 16th, if that's okay with everybody.
I'll second your motion.
Great. Is there any objections? No, so at this moment, item 10 will be held off until June 16th. And I believe that concludes our items, and now we are down to City Council, City Clerk, City Treasurer, Staff Request and City and Staff Request and Communication. Sorry, I couldn't speak. And speaking of City Treasurer, we haven't said hi to Marie Contreras. Hi, Marie.
She's here. Should I add her to the list when we do roll call?
Yes, you should.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, she's definitely here. I see her, but she's just on mute.
Yeah.
There she is.
I'm unmuted now.
There you are.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Are you ready? So we're taking in your request. We're gonna, we're gonna start coming in chamber soon.
Great. I love to see you all of you in person.
I, I love the enthusiasm. Now you gotta make sure you share that enthusiasm with the rest of staff, okay?
Oh, of course. They'll turn me off. They put me on mute.
There's, there's no mute there, don't worry. So, so moving on, I, I believe my first request was a discussion and direction for a Fourth of July event this year, considering, of course, safety, safety and COVID restrictions, budgeting and planning of the event. You know, we can have a discussion and then we can, we can go from there. I know that I, I did mention this to Manny, and we talked about the possibility of this being a, a form of hybrid event and potentially making this a vaccine site as well as, depending on the vaccine, we might be able to help full families get vaccinated, depending on what vaccine we can bring in. Or we can target people who otherwise wouldn't just show up to a regular vaccine event. So Manny, would you like to kind of discuss what's, what, what the plan is and what you've been able to gather?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity to elaborate a little bit about the request for Fourth of July. There's a few different elements associated with Fourth of July program. We've contacted the school district informally to, just as a courtesy to let them know that we, we may pending the council direction tonight, have a Fourth of July program at Saravista High School. Number one, we also reached out to the Pyros Spectacular Firework Company. During this time of the year, they are, are very, it, it is a very hot commodity. So I did speak to the owner of the company. He had, he did mention that because we are coming on late, the fire, the fireworks are a little bit at a premium. So if we should have the event on July 4th, which is Sunday, the cost would be about $25,000 versus the $21,000 of two years ago. If we have the event on July 3rd, which is Saturday, the cost would be about $20,000. Be, just because on Fourth of July, the technicians are, are very rare and they're harder to get a hold of, so it's kind of a premium. So just to put that out there, if we do go with the Fourth of July cost, I'm sure I could negotiate a price within Shannon's signing authority. So we would not have to come back to City Council for a subsequent meeting to approve the agreement. So I'm hoping I could get direction to, tonight. I've already secured price, prices or cost estimates from all the different departments in regards to what it would cost from the police department, public works, and all the particulars for a band, firework company, portable restrooms, staff to disinfect the restrooms, pick up all the rubbish after the event. And then addition, we have COVID-19 reg regulations. So as of right now, we have a capacity to fill up the service to high school grass field up to 67%. I suspect July, June 15th, the, that should go up a bit with the loosening of the restrictions, especially since LA County and the state is doing so, so well. So depending on council's direction, we have pretty much lined everything up. We have a sound company, we have a lighting company, we are in negotiations with a few different bands. We, if, we've had Alton John impersonator, the Doors impersonators, theater. We've had numerous bands over, over the years. So we are probably not going to provide any type of food unless the restrictions become a little, a little bit more lax, because right now in regards to food, it, it's very, very strict. So we are exploring food trucks. We have already asked other agencies or cities in Los Angeles County to provide us their plan of how they're going to administer a firework program. It appears that not many agencies are moving forward with the firework pro, program. But we would have a entrance in and an entrance out. We would have pods, family pods, and we are also exploring, much like Dodger Stadium, a vac, a vac area, a vaccinated area. And Mayor, thanks to your contact, we are in connection with Garfield Medical Hospital. And it, it appears that they are open to providing vaccines to the community. There's also some discussion that they are going to have a motivational piece. So maybe a raffle of, to encourage people to get the vaccine. So that's something that some agencies and some hospitals are starting to implement because there is a little bit of a downtick now with the vaccines, especially in Baldwin Park. We, we've had them at so many different locations, Church of the Redeemer, St. John's, The Ark, Kaiser. We've partnered with so many different agencies. We have done very well in terms of providing access to the vaccines. It's where I think we're almost at the point for anyone that wants a vaccine and could, and has ability to go to the vaccine site, could probably get the site. And there is a different a, element that we will be exploring soon for the homebound folks. How are we going to reach the homebound ones that may not have access to leave their house to get the vaccine? So I realize we're talking about Fourth of July, but if council has any questions, we could go, I, I could go ahead and respond to any of those. Thank you.
What, so when you reached out to the, to the Garfield Health Center, did they mention what vaccines they could provide?
They, they have access to all three of them. So we have been promoting Pfizer or McDerma, the two-shot vaccine just because of, it's just the highest success rate. So I would probably encourage the hospital to provide those. And we could go ahead and coordinate a second round, or they could go to the park. Just like you, you did, you had your first shot in, in Los Angeles and the second one in Baldwin, Baldwin Park. So maybe they will do that, get the first one at Service to High School and the second one at Kaiser. Or we could have a, a site for them.
Yeah, because I know the Johnson and Johnson is a little bit, I think it's easier to store, and it's a one-time thing. And if we're trying to go, you know, after a certain demographic with the vaccine, I think that would be perfect. But I also like the idea of this is a family event, and we can, and as of what, two weeks ago, I believe, we can now vaccinate 12-year-olds and up. So that's also something, the only thing would be, we might have to direct them out to Kaiser, and then they can go there and, and get their, their second vaccine as a walk-up.
Yes. So depending on council's direction, we are ready, we are ready to go. It, the, the total allocation is, let's see, the total allocation according to the budget that finance put together is approximately $61,000. And that covers the fireworks and all the overtime and staff time, materials, supplies, consultant services, and things of that nature.
Great. And so with, with staff, is, is staff comfortable covering this event? Are they, do they feel they have enough staff necessary?
It is, we are going to have less people, just, just because of the dynamics of COVID-19. We are in the process of hiring staff. So I'm probably looking at the cup half-full versus half-empty, and I feel relatively confident we will be able to make it happen. If, if not, we may have to, we may have to hire a contractor to assist us and with staffing, but I feel relatively comfortable. We should be able to make everything happen. So we would just need, we would just need to have a direction in regards to the third or the fourth, which day, Saturday or Sunday.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Thank you, Manny, for that information. I love the Fourth of July event, especially because it's a block away from my house, so I always walk there. It's an excellent event. I, I, I just love it. However, I, I'm still a little, and I, I mentioned it to the mayor, it's not a surprise. I'm still a little hesitant about the, the gathering of the people. I know it's a choice for us to show up. So if, if I want to show up, it's my choice to show up. I'm just concerned, especially right now, because, you know, they're saying, oh, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. But I also know people that are not vaccinated, and I say, well, I don't have to wear a mask, and I've seen them now wear a mask because, you know, it's just not clear on that. It, that's concerning to me. But the thing that's most concerning to me, I, I know, and you just mentioned it, Manny, you are, you have a lot of openings at Parks and Recreation, and I know your staff has been working long hours. You know, they're be, they're doing the, the senior meals, the, the, the vaccine sites, the parks. They're all over the place, and you have a very, very small staff right now. So I'm concerned for our staff. I'm concerned for their well-being and overworking them, and how do they feel about it? I know they're such good workers that they won't say no to you. But how do they really feel about coming to work? I really would like to look into that and, and see. Are they willing to come and work? That event takes a lot of hours because there's a lot of setting up and there's a lot of cleaning up after. And even though the crowd's going to be smaller, the setup and everything is the same. You still have to work a lot of hours to, to set up. You still have to monitor. And can they provide that services? I know they pride themselves in providing excellent events and giving 120% of themselves and making sure that, that all of our events always run smoothly. My concern is, can we do that safely? Being that COVID is still there, it hasn't gone away. Yeah, the restrictions have been lifted, but I'm concerned about our staff to make sure that they're comfortable, that they're not being overworked. The other thing, let's say you don't have enough staff. Now we are going to have to hire outside agencies, so now we're going to spend more money on hiring vendors come and, for example, if you're gonna have rights to monitor the right, whatever it is, the vendors that you don't, the staff that you don't have enough money, enough staff for, we're gonna have to hire from the outside. So now we're gonna spend more money here. But again, my main concern is our staff, because I know you're very short-staffed because there was a lot of staff that are not working because of COVID. So that is my main concern, Manny. I don't want to overkill them. I don't want to burden them more. And I know they love this event because I always see them and they put the, everything into it. So I would really like for us to have conversations with them, let, let's see how they feel. Do they feel that they're capable of pulling this off the way they know how? Not 75%, but 120% like they know how. I think we need to consider them. And again, Mayor, it's a wonderful event. I love the Fourth of July. But let's, let's put all the pieces together and let's consider everything. Let's talk to our staff and, and, and see how they feel. And so as to not jeopardize them or jeopardize anybody and that we don't overspend more money than we really should be spending at this time.
If, 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 if I might interject, I, I would probably need direction tonight because we would need to enter into an, an agreement with the firework company, contact LA County Fire Department, the fire marshal. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces. Maybe a compromise is we plan for this event next year and we focus on the street market that will start the first Thursday in August. And that will give us a few months to ramp up and hire all the staff, get them, get them trained. We have heard through some of our colleagues, through California Parks and Recreation, that it's a little bit more challenging to hire staff members right now because when you go for a TB test, it has to be an X-ray versus the skin test. So the, a lot of the California agencies are working out those details right, right now.
So as you just mentioned, there's a lot of, there's a lot of setbacks in all the departments. There's a lot of different things that they're looking at, you know, just to have events that we're so used to having and that your staff carries on with no problem. Well, we think it's no problem, but I know they put a lot of work into it. So that's why, you know, it's so hard to consider. I know August is a few months away. And for that, we can make a decision later whether we're gonna have enough staff in place, whether our streets are going to be complete at the time. But these events are, are important to our, our community. I know they are, they're important to everybody. But let, let's plan, um, to make sure that, that everybody's safe. But it's for the best interest of everybody, including our staff. And I know we're doing it for our community, but our staff is our community. They're the ones that, that bring everything together for us. They're the ones that make it happen. We have the vision and they make it happen. And you know, Manny, how wonderful your staff is and they never say no, they make it happen. Or even if it, they work twelve, fourteen hours. I'm just concerned.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we have staff starting at six AM and they're not finished until three o'clock in the morning. So, not the same, not the same staff, but yes, we have staff.
You see my concern? So, I mean, that, that's my major concern.
Right, so I don't know if any other council members have any comments, questions, concerns? I did want to mention, I, I know that we are pushing, so something to keep in mind is, and I believe Shannon shared it with us. So in LA County, there's, there still is, uh, there still is, uh, guidelines to make sure that you're wearing a mask in, in public settings and, and large gathering. Um, so I know that at the CDC level and at federal levels, things are a little bit more, uh, uh, open. At the, at county level, things are a little bit more different. I know, I know staff has been working very hard and I'm, I'm very grateful for it. You know, my, my idea was just that we can target a different demographic of people who aren't fully vaccinated or who otherwise wouldn't get vaccinated. Um, and, and I think our, so, and I also did consider our, our vaccination levels. And I think in the San Diego Valley, Baldwin Park does have a, 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 a pretty high rate of, of people getting vaccinated. I know that when we toured, um, Kaiser, we were talking about how, you know, the demand for the vaccine is, is, is slumping. So a lot of people aren't as eager to get the vaccine as they were. And so one of the ways that we could potentially ramp up that effort was to do something like this. Um, I saw, I know El Monte has been doing a farmer's market for over, I, I believe for over a month now, and they've been doing okay. Which is why I felt okay to bring up this discussion. It, um, and I believe that today is their farmer's market and they are doing something similar. So they are in partnership with, uh, with Hilda's Lees's office and they are offering that vaccine at that event. Um, so just, those were just kind of some of the things. I don't know if any other council members have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I just had a question for Manny. Manny, so if you were to have to set this event up now, let's just say by June first. Are you fully staffed to be able to, to do that?
Uh, not at, not by June first. It is my hope to be, uh, to have additional staff on board by July fourth. I think it, it will be a challenge. It is a, a tall task to pull this event off in a regular year. And now with staff being furloughed and staff finding other employment, it is challenging.
And that's my concern, that if, you know, we're, we're being hopeful, but if we get to July third, July fourth, and we don't have that staff to. You know, have enough manpower to set everything up, you know, we're going to spend that money kind of for nothing. And it would be a good idea to maybe focus our efforts on the street market that's coming up in August, which is one month after the Fourth of July. And maybe we can set up some type of vaccination, you know, hub there somewhere in a corner, just in case, you know. People want to get vaccinated there, we want to push that.
Yes, of course. And that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we had a discussion around this, considered it. I know a lot of, uh, residents have been, uh, yearning for some fresh air. Um, I, I do want to make sure that we continue and, and keep in contact with, uh, Garfield Health Center. I know that they're very eager to, to, uh, partner with us and offer our residents, uh, not just the vaccines, but I, I believe that they also have other educational efforts. Yes. Yeah, so if we can partner with them, that would be, you know, we can look for other potential partnerships with them, that would be great.
Yes.
Especially as we know, as we try to diversify where we, where we set our, uh, vaccination sites, which I think has been very helpful in, in making sure that every area of the city gets covered. And we all get a fair shot at, at getting that, the, the appropriate care.
Thank you.
Great. And so, uh, my next comment is, uh, I believe we voted to know, not extend the E and A behind. For the parking lot behind, um, what is the downtown area and, and Morgan Park. And, and I, and I think that that would be a great area to really look into creating a, a walkable portion of the downtown area. I know that, uh, I've talked to some council members before and I've mentioned it with staff that I, we believe that area has potential. It, it can really entice people to walk into the downtown area and, and end up in the park and, and, uh, and enjoy our, our green space. Um, I know that we have the little corridor between Maine and, and the, and the little healthcare center there. And I, I passed by there and I believe that that itself has potential to really brighten things up and welcome people from there into the, into that parking lot. Which could be a little village offering, uh, some commercial opportunities for residents. Uh, so I don't know if council has any, uh, any comments or concerns, questions regarding that, that opportunity? I think it's, it's, it's a great idea. I think it's something to really discuss and look into.
Yes, Mayor, if I may. I think, uh, you, you're right. We've had discussions and, and I think that's a, a perfect spot to vamp up our, uh, our downtown area. There's, there's a lot there. I share, we share with Manny and, and the mayor. So if we can sit down as staff and have special meeting and start planning. On the, the many possibilities that can happen in that particular area to really make it a walkable downtown area. With, uh, with restaurants, cafes, shops that, that we want to walk into. That would extend into our park and create more activity for our beautiful park that we already have there. Um, it would benefit our street market as well, because it would bring more businesses. So it's a wonderful conversation that I'm looking forward to having. Uh, I think, uh, we would all have great ideas that we can bring. And I'm sure, um, Ben has a lot of experience and, and he can bring his ideas as well as Ronnie. Let's have, actually, all of the staff members, let's, um, let's send out a survey to our, to our staff. You know, what would you like to see there? What kind of eateries would you like? And, and take it from there to see how we can make that a, a more walkable area for our downtown. Thank you.
Great. Uh, I don't know if any other council members have any questions, concerns? Or maybe Ben can chime in at this point?
Yes, Mayor, city council members. Um, yeah, I think that's great. I think, uh, what I'd recommend is we, we have, um, we have that kind of discussion. We also seek some, um, outside counsel from, from retail specialists. To give us their input on, uh, the, the marketability of the site. You know, from a credit tenant standpoint, what tenants could we potentially achieve there? And, you know, it's really tricky times right now, because as we know, we've gone through a very rough time with retail and eateries. Through the COVID season. And before that, there was already huge fluctuations with retail and eateries already. Because of online shopping and all the things that are happening. So, so now we're coming out of COVID. Uh, I think it would be a good idea to also get that sort of input. As we proceed to, you know, to see what the vision is for that site. And, um, we can do it effectively. We don't have to spend a ton of money. Uh, so I, in my opinion, sometimes ci- cities spend a tonny, ton of money, uh, doing like highest and best use types of studies. For, for, for a piece of land like this, a highest best, highest best new study. But I think we can do it much more efficiently and get that input as well. So that's what, that would be my recommendation in, in addition to what was discussed right now.
Yeah, and I, and if you're able to, Ben, I'd like to take you on a walk around downtown. And just kind of explain to you what, you know, what we've been talking about. And, and I think, you know, Baldwin Park has potential and I, and I feel that, you know, residents really, really see that, you know. And, and whether you stand as in the downtown area now or in the morning, people really see that there's potential in our downtown and, and what it could, and what it can be, right? And, and as we look, you know, to offer programs and services and fund all these other things, we need to collect revenue. And I, and I think that it's very important that, that our city starts making sure that, that, that we start securing revenue funds. You know, we, we've been talking about offering more services at parks and wrecks and, and doing more for the community. So, so I think that this is very important. I think we are in a perfect position as there's nothing there at this time. So there's not a matter of trying to buy and, and, you know, and, and, and remove and then build on. So I think that we're in a perfect position. So Ben, if you're able to. Uh, sometime soon, I'd like to plan with you, a walk to the downtown area. If you're, if you're open to it, you know, and.
Tennis shoes are ready.
Yeah, and I'll even.
Count me in.
Yeah, we'll even take you to a, to a, what is it, Menchie's? Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to mention, um, I mean, where do I start? Let's see. I mean, you know that I've been on the council for fourteen years and prior to that, I was on the planning commission. And I can, I can tell you that, you know, in speaking with different, um, retailers. Or developers or brokers, there's always been a great interest in the ten freeway. Commercial corridor for obvious reasons. You know, that's where Target and Home Depot and some of the larger retail big box stores have, have been cited. Downtown has always been, uh, more difficult, you know, as far as getting people to pay attention. And some of the, you know, some of the history that feeds into that is, it's just. It's, it's removed from like high volumes of, of traffic. We have Ramona Boulevard that is pretty busy. And I think that's one of the reasons why we've been able to attract, um, Starbucks more recently. Um, but, you know, there has been so much investment in our downtown area. Um, starting with the train of more than twenty years ago, the train that came in. Um, the parking structure, you know, the affordable housing units. Um, one of the ideas, I was on the planning commission when, well, I, I actually approved BIMAD. And it was like a big risk because of, you know, the, the alcohol and all of that. But, I mean, that was so long ago. That was like twenty years ago. And so I don't, I don't want to inject any pessimism into this conversation. I, I only want to mention this history as context. And also to give perspective on the challenges of attracting businesses to our downtown area. And that was one of the reasons why the Olson Company made sense for me. Is because, you know, we wanted to create a, a self, like a sustained, a self-sufficient downtown. Where people could walk out of their homes and walk to the businesses and, you know, use their disposable income. And have a mixed income, um, community with low, moderate and, uh, low income, moderate income. And market rate housing. Um, I understand at the last council meeting I wasn't able to attend. But I understand that that project was, was, um, not extended. And, um, you know, I, 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 I don't know all the reasons. I, I don't know the, the thought process behind that. But it was one of the few developers that actually, over the last fourteen years that I've been a council member. And, and introducing people to that site, it, they were the only, um, company that actually expressed interest in that site. Because it's a very small site. So I just want to share all of that as context, um, because I have been, you know, here for fourteen years. Plus my planning commission experience that, where I was first appointed in two thousand and one. And I hope that this, you know, um, this next chapter can continue to revitalize, uh, the downtown area. And I hope that we can bring new business. Um, but I just want to let you know that this is something that's been ongoing for many, many years. And, um, you know, it may even require some city investment, like, um, facade improvement. Or, um, you know, a business improvement district or something like that. Um, to help the existing businesses and then to see what we can do to attract. You know, again, the investment, the, the added investment in our, in our downtown. So I just want to share that. I, I feel like we missed an opportunity with Olson to bring disposable income to our downtown area. That's self-sufficient and sustained. Um, but I absolutely welcome, you know, the conversation to explore other types of investment. That will help with, you know, the continued revitalization of downtown. It's been an ongoing, uh, process and, and challenge, but I, I'm excited that you guys are excited. And, um, so let's see what comes next.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I, and I, and it is a challenge, you know, when we talk about development and we talk about bringing in new businesses. I, it is a challenge without a doubt. And, you know, we, we've talked about this before and I know I talk about it all the time. With e-commerce in the, uh, coming in, you know, people aren't shopping as much. And I think that, and, you know, development isn't, at least in my opinion, development isn't what it used to be. Where all we wanted was to bring in these big brand, big box chain stores and, you know, how do we get this and how do we get that? And so I think that we have to be creative. And I think when I, at least myself, when I look at other downtowns and I look at other areas where I want to shop. And, you know, and I look at tiny villages and, and whatnot, whether it's in, in Seminole, you know, County, Montclair, or, you know, even places like, uh, Monrovia. It's, it's always a feel that they have to it. And I, and I do think that Baldwin Park has that feel to it, to it. You know, we have a community that's, that's proud to be here. Some of these families are older than, you know, they've been here longer than the city itself, you know. And, and they pride themselves in being here. And, and, you know, they talk about wanting to spend time here and money here. And, you know, and I've, and I've heard the arguments and, you know, I think about it. And, you know, we have, I'm not entirely sure how many condos are in, in Park Shadows, but there's, I would say there's at least over a hundred. You know, and I, and I, and honestly, I don't see those people eating at, you know, La Miracana, or I don't see those people spending their money at the Himalayan restaurant. Uh, you know, I live in front of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar condos and I don't see those people, uh, spending their money at Marisco Martine. And I don't see those people spending their money at Carne Seria Roapan, you know. So just because we put people with disposable income in a, in a certain location, I don't think it, it necessarily translates into them spending their money there. Um, so that's my, my, that was one of the reasons that I didn't want to keep supporting this. Just, it, it, I, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't see that happening in other, any other development. Um, so, and, and like I said, you know, uh, Baldwin Park residents are very proud of their city, you know. And, and I know that they are really looking for something that they can really enjoy and, and be proud of in the downtown area. And, you know, maybe we can bring in, you know, big retail into our downtown. But, you know, we can look around Baldwin Park, there's great places, you know. What if, what if, uh, the acai joint was a little bit closer to the downtown area? And you can enjoy one of those bowls, you know, in an open setting near the park and then make your way to the park. Or, you know, what if we could find restaurants around here? You know, there's like Costa Nita, which is hidden away. And it's, it's a little bit of a gem here in Baldwin Park with, with great food. What if we can get them to come to the Baldwin Park downtown? And we could benefit them with more foot traffic and they would benefit our downtown with more foot traffic and revenue. So I, I think it's, it's, without a doubt, it's not an easy conversation, but I think it's a conversation that has to ha- happen. And, and I think that we really have to get ahead of it, like I said, in order to create revenue and really, uh, do something that benefits our, our residents. So I don't know if any other council members have any questions or concerns?
No, I think that's a great idea, Mayor. I think that it's, it's time that we start to explore what else we can do in the downtown. Besides, uh, bringing in, you know, these, uh, six, seven hundred thousand dollar townhomes. Um, I think that we do need to explore. And I know that it's been a long time coming, but the more we talk about it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna just magically appear. We have to be proactive. We need to put a plan in place. And we need to figure out what exactly it is that we want to bring in and what is, what is the, what is our community want to see in downtown? If I lived behind BIMAD, I was not going to walk out of my, or I don't, I can guarantee you none of the residents there. We're going to walk out of that housing development and go across the street to Superior or, or Menchie's. Because that's all there, there really is to do there. We really need to bring a real downtown feel where it's going to really want, not only our residents, but people from other communities. To say, let's go to Baldwin Park. They're having this, they're having that, you know, in their downtown. We don't have that. You know, so it is time that we start to explore what it is that our, that our community really wants. Yes, I, I can understand that in the past, there was probably developers that were hesitant to come. Uh, but at the end of the day, if we don't build something attractive, nothing's gonna, no, nobody's gonna want to come. But if we build it, they will come. I can guarantee you that. So I think it is time that we start to explore exactly what it is that we want our downtown to look like and start putting those plans in place. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. So, a- and I, like I said, I think this is an important discussion and I'm, and I'm glad that, you know, we're able to have it. So, uh, I believe at this moment, we can make a motion to direct, uh, Ben to start looking into, uh, possibilities of development. For retail and mixed use, uh, in, in that specific area, which is, uh, located at Morgan Street and Lawrence Avenue. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? Great. So Ben, you have clear direction?
Thank you.
And I, I expect to see you with your running shoes on in the next upcoming days, okay? Um, and then Mayor Proton, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I put on the discussion, uh, to discuss the policy for street vendors. I know back when I just recently got elected, uh, in early twenty nineteen, we reviewed this policy. And the whole idea of this policy is, uh, to help the vendors. And absolutely, they, they need to have a license. They need to make sure they go through the health, uh, department to make sure they're operating. And they're following all the guidelines. However, at the time, I recall having a conversation that the. However, at the time, I recall having a conversation that the idea behind this is to help them seek licenses. If they don't know how to get a license, walk them through the process of getting their license, walk them through the process of getting their health license. The idea is to be able to help them. Of course, we want them operating under our city license and following state codes when it comes to the health department. So I would like to revisit and go through that ordinance to make sure that our vendors are being treated fairly. I know these vendors are trying to make a living just like you and I. And I know there's businesses that, I have a business here, and they pay the business license. Well, these people will be doing the same. But we may need to make the process a little easier, just like we do for our businesses here. We walk them through, we help them, especially with COVID. They, there's been a lot of outreach on how to help them. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but some of the businesses have received monies to help them get through this COVID. So I need to make sure that our ordinance is helping our street vendors, that they're not being, that we're not proactively enforcing code out there to them, that we're out there helping them. So I want to make sure that we go to that ordinance to make sure it is stated, the process that we would like our staff to take when they do come across a vendor that is not licensed. They may not know the regulations, so we are going to walk them through. We are going to make sure that their applications get processed. And if we need to hold their hand, well, then let's do that. We're not hurting anybody by doing that. If anything, we're helping another human being get by to make a living, to either feed themselves and their wife or their selves and kids. We need to be, touch our heart a little more and help others. Let's just not point the finger and say, oh, you're a vendor. You don't belong here. No, let's help them. So let's go through that ordinance. And, but at this point, I want to make sure that code enforcement is not being proactive, but not taking advantage of these vendors and that if anything, you're helping them. So we need to schedule a meeting, Shannon, so we can go over this and make sure the ordinance is clear. So I'd like to make, to make a motion to revamp this ordinance, Mayor, and so that it helps us as city members, it helps our businesses, but it helps the vendors as well. That's my motion.
Great. And then I will second your motion. And before I continue, I just, I do think it's important that we, that we have discussion and we look at how we are treating our, our street vendors. As we know, street vending was legalized statewide when the state law passed and we had to change it. If I recall correctly, and I believe I was there, I made a public comment as a resident. But I recall that, you know, we, it was kind of a, something swift to pass in order for the city to keep its ability to govern and over its jurisdiction. And I'm not entirely sure that it's been updated since. So, and I think it's important to really review it and see, you know, how possible is this? Is the system that we're trying to put people through, right? Does it make sense? What are we asking them for? And how realistic are expectations of a street vendor with fees and permits and everything that they need to obtain to be, to be completely, you know, legal? So I think it's important that we support our, our, our street vendors and make sure that they get onto it, to a legal path of vending on the streets. I know people mentioned other cities, and the truth is that, you know, we've seen what happens when we don't act accordingly or respectfully with other, with our street vendors. And it makes, you know, and it puts a blight on the image of the city and of our department of code enforcement. So we are taking action to mitigate that and make sure that there is a positive relationship between the community and its constituents. So with that, I will second your motion, Mayor Potem. Is there any objections? No, and I believe that's clear direction. Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Okay, my second item, I'd like to request the city to have discussion and direction to staff to hold Staff Appreciation Day. As you know, our staff has been working many hours. I just mentioned it too many already. All of our staff in all of our departments, Parks and Recreation, the Police Department, Public Works, our offices, our staff in the offices. Everybody has been working through this COVID, and I commend them because they are amazing. And I don't think we recognize them enough. We don't tell them enough how appreciated they are because without them, this city wouldn't be running. Bottom line, the executives can't run the city by themselves. So we need every single staff member involved and engaged. And that's what I see all the time. As slow as we are with staff, the staff members in every department are very engaged. They're always working. So I think we need to have a Staff Appreciation Day, not just this time around because of COVID, but I think we should make it a process that, that we continue to do on a regular basis. A simple, you know, here's a five dollar Starbucks card for your department for doing an excellent job, for standing out. You know, we can come up with ways to show them how much we appreciate them. And again, it's for every single department in the city of Baldwin Park, including the executives, of course, because you guys are giving that direction. So again, I would like to make a motion to dedicate a day for our staff and our employees and let them know how much we are appreciating their every minute, every hour that they spend here in the city to make sure that our residents are happy and that they are provided great services. So, Mayor, I'm motioning to have this implemented in our city starting soon and to continue throughout the time so that we can continue to appreciate our staff and then put our minds together to see how we can come up in appreciating our staff.
Second your motion. Is there any objections?
Thank you. And now that you second my motion, I'd like to invite everybody to Staff Appreciation Day. So we'd like to have a Staff Appreciation Day. Let's put together, we can start discussions. We have more than enough time to do a Staff Appreciation Day on June the third, from eleven to two. We're going to do a Staff Appreciation Day for all of the staff. We're going to have to rotate the staff because it's a lot of us to come in at different times. So managers, you're going to have to work out schedules. So every single member in your department gets the opportunity to come to the staff appreciation. We're working out the details. At the same time, we can say goodbye and thank you to Shannon for all the years of service that he's put into our city. I know it hasn't been easy, Shannon, and I know you've had many challenges with, probably with every single one of us. And you, you hold a tough job, so we want to appreciate you as well on that day. So make sure you show up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to invite everybody. I'll ask Lulu to send out an email, so every single staff member gets that email. And Manny, let's rack our brains to see what we can provide every staff member with a little something this time.
Absolutely.
For future references, we will, we will plan better. I know it's short notice, but I think this is a good time to do it. We're getting out of the COVID lockdown, and now Shannon's leaving. So what a good time to appreciate him and all the staff in the city of Baldwin Park. So I invite you June third from eleven to two. Thank you.
Great. And is there any more questions, comments? Anything staff or council is willing to comment about or looking to comment about? Not. Let me get my next agenda. At this moment, I move to open the Baldwin Park Finance Authority Virtual Meeting. There is a consent calendar, and that's Treasury Report for March two thousand and twenty-one. At this moment, I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? Any objections? None. Consent calendar passes, and I move to adjourn the Finance Authority Virtual Meeting. I call to order the Baldwin Park Housing Authority Virtual Meeting. And I move to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No, and I moved to adjourn, I moved to adjourn the Baldwin Park Housing Authority Virtual Meeting. And I believe at this point, we are, we are done with the agenda and we are done with our meetings. And I believe we are going back and we are recessing back into closed session. So is that correct, Shannon?
Yes, Mayor, we can use the same link, and then we'll have to come back to this link to report out, if anything.
Great. Okay, so I will see you all there.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi, Mark or Lulu, you don't need me to come back, do you?
Yeah, you can lock out now.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye.
Good night, Mark. Thanks so much.
You
Mark, are you ready? Are we recording?
It's live.
Great, so we're ready? Great, so City Attorney, is there anything to report out?
Mr. Mayor, we did consider one additional item in closed session. There's no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Great, so at this moment, I will move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Great, so meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.